We'll note that all commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Steiner, who's absent. First item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business?
Mr. President.
Mr. Colley.
I have two items that I would like to change on the agenda. Item 4A, the FMLA secondary employment ordinance. We'd like to request that be included on the reports section of the agenda. We will not request action on that at tonight's meeting. Also, item 4F, the 40th Street Special Assessment District. We would ask that that item be pulled from tonight's agenda.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Hearing done. Would there be a motion to approve the order of business with the two changes that Mr. Colley referenced?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Okay. So then we'll go to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss?
Mr. President, I'll move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing done. We'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda. And the first item there would be 4B, city vehicle commuter rate. And Mr. Colley is going to introduce that item.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. This resolution is a matter of compliance with IRS regulations. As you may recall, the city did have an IRS payroll audit recently. And one of the matters that was noted on the payroll audit was that when city employees take a city vehicle home for the purposes of responding on call to an employment incident or for some other reason, the IRS does require that the employer, the city here, charge the reasonable value of that city-owned commuter vehicle to the employees as a non-cash fringe benefit. The minimum amount that is allowed by the IRS regulations is $1.50 per one-way commute or $3 per day, and that is the rate that is included in this resolution. You can increase the rate if you so desire, but staff's recommendation at this point is they would adopt the IRS rate. We expect that this rate will principally apply to those employees that will be taking a city-owned vehicle home for the purposes of being on-call and responding to employment events while they are off work hours. This would be, excuse me, this would be Resolution 38-2014. And be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Mr. Colley, and you've heard his explanation. Any comments or questions? Not, I think this is, did you say Resolution 38?
Yes.
Okay. 38-2014. Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
A motion to approve 38-2014.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. We'll vote. Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We'll go down to item C. This is the Public Safety Center Manager-at-Risk Contract with J.E. Dunn. And Mr. Colley will also introduce this item.
Yes, Mr. President and Commissioners, you have in your packet two fairly lengthy documents that comprise the construction manager-at-risk contract with J.E. Dunn for construction of the Public Safety Center. As a construction manager-at-risk, J.E. Dunn promises and contracts with the city for a guaranteed maximum price for the project. The guaranteed maximum price for this facility is $14,23,422. You have had presentations about the guaranteed maximum price in the project. At previous city commission meetings, city staff would request approval of these contracts, and this would constitute the notice to proceed for the contractor to begin construction of that facility. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Comments or questions by Commissioners?
Mr. President, Mr. Colley, I guess maybe for the benefit of the public, more than anything, as I looked at this, it seemed to reflect the presentation we saw. Was it the last meeting or two meetings ago?
I believe it was the last meeting when the architect was here. But yes, this is consistent with the presentations that they gave to you at that meeting.
Thank you.
When this is the construction cost, when you include the construction management fee, the architectural fees, what in round numbers is our total number? Maybe you have it to the penny there.
Maybe not to the penny, but close. We are carrying in our capital improvement plan a $15,150,000 expense for this building. And that would include FF and E as well, so outfitted completely.
Is that with architectural fees? I'm looking for the number that would include architectural fees.
That is the number. The $14,005,000 is what we are carrying for construction, so this falls...
Architectural fees are only $600,000 or $700,000?
I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but I think they were closer to about $800,000.
So, and what number are you carrying there?
$15,001.
$15,001. We might be a little light there.
It's possible.
Yeah. Okay. Other comments or questions? Do you adjust the numbers in that sheet once the actual numbers are known?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions regarding this item? If you choose to go forward, then the motion would be to approve the contract.
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing done. Then we'll vote. Mr. Altman's.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us to item D. These are cost participation agreements regarding Empire Road and Willer Circle and 15th Street amendments. And Mr. Colley will introduce these items, and I assume we act on each one of them separately.
That's correct, Mr. President, yes. The first one I have for you is a cost participation agreement with respect to Empire Road and Willer Circle. This is an agreement with St. Joseph's Hospital and Health Center, as well as the Dickinson Park and Recreation District. The facilities that are currently being constructed are Empire Road, Willer Circle, as well as a multi-use path surrounding the hospital property or as part of the hospital property. Under this agreement, the city will construct all of the infrastructure, and the hospital will pay for the construction costs of Willer Circle. Those construction costs are just above $1.4 million. Those funds have been received by the city at this point already, and the city is holding them in escrow. So the hospital has contributed their funds already. The multi-use path, it is about a $350,000 multi-use path. The city has dedicated $250,000 to that path. The Park District as well is contributing to that in the amount of $50,000. I did have a chance to talk with the Park District Director today. Their board has considered this agreement and is favorable to it. They do as well have, or may have access to some additional funds to complete the construction cost of the multi-use path. Be happy to take any questions if you have them, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Are there any comments or questions by Commissioners? Not, is there a motion regarding this agreement?
I'll move that we approve the Empire Road agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing done. We'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman's.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Colley, would you continue?
Yes, Mr. President and Commissioners, the next agreement I have for you is cost participation agreement for 15th Street. You have seen this agreement before, a meeting or two ago. This is an agreement between the city, the Roars Development Group, and the Pinecrest Development Group for the construction of 15th Street. There are some amendments to the agreement that you saw earlier. Principally, those amendments have to do with the manner in which the Pinecrest Group and the Roars Group will share the costs of construction for 15th Street. There is a breakdown, I believe it's on page four of the agreement, of the percentage shares that each of them will cover for the costs of the various parts of that infrastructure. The other minor change that was made to this agreement has to do with the allocation of capacity within the sewer lines. There is some small amount of sewer capacity that the Pinecrest Group will use for one of the sewer connections being bored underneath Interstate 94. And that allocation is reflected in this agreement as well. City staff recommend approval of the agreement as it has been amended. Be happy to take any questions you would have.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Are there any questions regarding this agreement? If not, is there a motion regarding either the approval or disapproval of it?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. We'll vote. Mr. Altman's.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to item E. There are two development agreements, one entitled Hospital Acres and the second Westridge Second. And Mr. Colley will introduce both these items also.
Mr. President, the first development agreement I have is the Hospital Acres Second Edition. This is the property on which the new hospital is being constructed. This development agreement differs from some of those that you have seen in the past, principally because the city is doing the installation of the infrastructure for that property. City will be constructing Empire Road, Willer Circle, as well as the multi-use path with the hospital contributing dollars to the construction of Willer Circle. That arrangement is reflected in this development agreement. Other than that, it is substantially in the same form of development agreements that you have seen in the past. City staff recommend approval and be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Any comments or questions? Not, is there a motion regarding this agreement?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I will second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing done. We'll vote. Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Mr. Colley.
The next development agreement I have for you is with respect to Westridge Second Edition, as well as a replat of Westridge First Edition. This agreement is in substantially the same form as you have seen for prior development agreements. Does require the developer to construct all of the interior infrastructure in order to service their properties. Deals with the fire department's or emergency services rights of access, provision of construction roads or temporary roads until the structures are completed. I don't believe other than that there are any unusual aspects to this agreement. City staff do recommend approval and be happy to take any questions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Any questions regarding the Westridge Second? If not, is there a motion regarding the approval of this development agreement?
I'll move to approve the Westridge Second Agreement.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I just want to take a minute to commend staff. You know, these development agreements are involved. They've become really complex. When you read the two that we have tonight, for those of us who've been reading these the last couple, three years, you can see the evolution that's occurred, what staff has put together. I know Mr. Colley has been at the forefront of that, Mr. Cortan, probably Mr. Kubis. But I think they've really evolved to a good place, and I think you guys would be to be commended for where we are. I'm sure we'll make changes in the future, but...
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other comments? It's been a long time since you started. Did we get the motion? We did, didn't we?
We did.
Yes, okay.
I didn't talk that long.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll go ahead then with the vote. If there are no other comments, Mr. Altman's.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So far, this is just an old Mr. Colley meeting. We'll just continue that way. Item G, Southwest Water Authority. We'll let Mr. Colley introduce and explain this one also.
I have to explain myself. Mr. Kessel was gone last week, so I got to put all these on by myself. So I just get to do them all first. Mr. President and Commissioners, the next item is a quitclaim deed for some city property that would be conveyed to the state of North Dakota through the Southwest Water, excuse me, through the State Water Commission and Southwest Water Authority. This is a parcel of property located in between the 6 million gallon reservoir and the current Public Works Building along Broadway Street. This is an approximately 4.89 acre parcel of property. The State Water Commission and Southwest Water Authority anticipate using this property for the construction of a new water treatment facility at some point in the future. Their plans on that have not been finalized, but this gives them the property in order to pursue their development plans and finalize proposals for construction of a new water treatment plant. The, I should mention too, the consideration that's recited in the deed is a dollar. That's typical for all quitclaim deeds that are filed. However, we do have another agreement with Southwest Water Commission that does provide the city credit toward its share of the finished water pump station for the value of this property. And the amount that we have agreed to with Southwest Water for this parcel is $700,000. So that will be credited toward the city's share of the finished water pump station.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. You've heard his comments. Any questions or comments of your own? I think this has been going on for some time, and I think those of us who have known about it or been involved with it feel that this is a good deal for the city and for Southwest Water and all the constituents that they serve outside the city of Dickinson also. We certainly need additional water processing capacity, so... Any other comments?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. We'll vote. Mr. Altman's.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That brings us to item H, reports. And we added the FMLA issue to those reports along with the other items that are listed. And we'll turn it back to Mr. Colley to give the reports.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. First item on the FMLA ordinance, this ordinance would provide that cities, or excuse me, that employees who are on FMLA leave are not permitted to engage in secondary employment or self-employment during the period that they are on FMLA leave. The statute itself does not require that. It allows for employees to have secondary employment. The implementing regulations recently issued have suggested that in order for an employer to prohibit secondary employment, the company needs to create a policy and enforce that policy to prohibit secondary employment of employees. So that is the change that is made in this ordinance. If we receive favorable comments tonight on pursuing that ordinance, we would take this before the Civil Service Commission, allow them to hold a hearing on it and take any comments that employees or other interested parties may have, and then bring it back to this commission for your consideration. If there are no comments on that matter, the other report that I had for you was with respect to truck routes. We have had some discussion among city staff about establishing truck routes, particularly with the soon-to-be-completed interim bypass. It seems to be a good time to formally establish truck routes within the city. Our ordinance requires that we bring a resolution before you along with a map of what those truck routes would be. And then, once you would adopt that, we could go out and sign roads within the city to establish those truck routes and provide for penalties for trucks that are operating off of those truck routes in circumstances where that would not be allowed. So the routes, the roadways that we have anticipated to be established as truck routes are 30th Avenue West, the West I-94 Business Loop, State Avenue South from Velard to 8th Street Southwest, 8th Street Southwest from State Avenue to 9th Avenue Southeast, 9th Avenue Southeast to 8th Street Southwest, excuse me, 9th Avenue Southeast from 8th Street Southwest to Velard, Velard from 9th Avenue Southeast to 10th Avenue West, East 94 Business Loop, and then Interstate 94. More or less creates a circle around the city that we could establish and inform trucking companies where trucks could be operated to get through and around our city. I'd be happy to take any questions on this resolution or on the FMLA ordinance if you would have one.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Are there any comments, any feedback for Mr. Colley and city staff regarding these two items?
Mr. President, I have a quick question for Mr. Colley. We have established the, what we're going to have for a speed limit on these truck routes? Or is that a state?
We have not established speed limits. Mr. Kubis may be better able to talk to speed limits. Some of those roads have established speed limits, but Mr. Kubis would probably be better able to answer that.
The speed limit will vary depending on the route classification. Some of these routes, unfortunately, because we have no other route to get around through town, do run adjacent to a residential neighborhood. All of those will be signed at 25. Some are 35 right now, like State Avenue. Others are 55 on the West Business Loop. We had some discussion about reducing speed limits there. So it, they'll all vary. And then the DOT for the immediate will dictate the speed limit on the interim bypass that just got built.
My concern was the ones that are adjacent to the residential, because I have been receiving some calls.
Yeah, all of those.
And those.
As far as I know, State Avenue might be the exception where it borders a residential neighborhood. They'll all be 25 miles an hour. And we've had some discussion on some of those routes about reinforcing the 25 mile an hour speed limit with more signage, you know, possibly more enforcement, but understanding that it's a sensitive area when we have semis driving through residential neighborhoods.
FMA President Johnson, we've also talked a couple different ways, or a couple different thoughts on that enforcement issue or the awareness issue, maybe even painting the speed limits onto the streets themselves, doing some unique things at least for Dickinson. And I'd also wanted to mention that one of the other motivating factors behind establishing an official truck route was we now participate in the uniform truck permit process by the North Dakota oil and gas-producing counties. And it is a lot easier to participate in that program with an established truck route. And there, that way we give them the route, they can then issue those permits, and if we have changes or alternates, we can notify them. But with the truck route, it becomes much more consistent and thereby compliance much more easy when it comes to those loads traversing through our community.
Thank you. Mr. Kubis, on North Highway 22, say the stoplight between the Walmart entrance and 21st Street, what is the speed limit there? And is that set by the state?
It has been set by the state. At Walmart, it's 40 until approximately in the middle of the Prairie Hills Mall. It drops down to 25.
Yeah. It's my observation that they're doing at least 40, and they try to make the stoplight at 21st. So, you know, when they see the stoplight turning orange, rather than slow down and come to a stop, they speed up. So we're hitting that stoplight pretty fast. I really wonder if that's maybe a two-block stretch between Walmart and the 21st Street stoplight at max. I really question that speed being 40 or 45 miles per hour.
I think that's a route we can take a look at, Mr. President. We actually discussed several routes in town where, just with the increased traffic now, that it makes a little bit of sense. It doesn't feel comfortable to drive sometimes at the posted speed limits when the traffic is real heavy during rush hours. Sometimes you're not able to drive the speed limit, so...
But you get those big trucks moving 40 to 50 miles an hour. They can't stop at the stoplight even if it calls for them to stop.
I think that's a route we can definitely look at and coordinate with the state on possibly looking at a reduced speed limit there.
Thank you. Mr. Colley, just a comment on, I think next time we consider truck routes, let's have a map, you know, paper color, you know, paper map that we can look at and then one that we can put up on the screen so citizens can see the designated truck routes. And hopefully, once that interim bypass opens, that will take some of those trucks off of Highway 22 coming north there between that bypass and the interstate, so... Anything else to report?
I believe that's it.
Okay. Well, it's not yet 5 o'clock. I think we can get down to the police department under Public Safety. Chief Dossinger, there's a couple of items there that you're going to introduce. I know the first one is a mobile command vehicle.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. At the May 19th City Commission meeting, we were asked to verify and review the bids received for our mobile command vehicle project and resubmit our recommendations. As you may remember, we received six sealed bids on the project. The lowest bidder was Nomad Global Communications, the amount of $150,000. At that time, the committee reviewed the bid initially had several reservations with their proposal, the biggest of which was an assurance with compatibility with our direct link throw phone communication system. In reviewing their bid proposal and consulting Attorney Colley regarding their blanket verbiage regarding making bid specifications, we recommend at this time awarding the bid to Nomad Global Communications in the amount of $150,000. This will be paid for by an oil impact grant by the state of North Dakota as well.
Yeah, and this was the original low bid?
Correct.
Okay. All right, you've heard Chief Dossinger's recommendation and report. Are there any comments or questions? Not, would there be a motion regarding this bid?
Make the motion to accept the bid.
And I'll second.
And we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing done. We'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Then we'll let you do your second item also.
In October of 2013, the Dickens Police Department was awarded a grant from the Attorney General's Office in the amount of $450,000 to purchase simulcast radio system for public safety radios. This system will increase the range and reception for the Dickens Police Department and Dickinson Fire Department for both portable and car radios. After awarding the contract to Tate Communication, the Tate team began developing the project for us during the development phase. Tate Communication inquired about the uninterrupted power supply system that we currently have for our radio system. At that time, it was discovered that we do not have a UPS system, and they were in the assumption that we did. Their development team requested that we look at purchasing a UPS system for our design. They came up with three options for us. Option one allows for two to three hours of continuous runtime for the simulcast system should the main power supply be compromised. This option is priced at just a little under $10,000 and includes UPS at all three sites. The three sites that we are counting, or we are talking about is our current site on 4th Avenue, East of Water Tower Hill area, radar base hill, and the water tower off of State Avenue and 15th Street. Those are the three UPS systems would be installed. The UPS system is basically a battery backup system for an electronic device which allows for uninterrupted use should the main power supply be compromised. The police department and the fire department are willing to pay for the cost. I arm wrestled Mr. Seabok and he lost, so he's going to agree to pay for part of the project as well. We are recommending that the city look at purchasing UPS for all three sites with uninterrupted use for up to two to three. use for up to two to three hours for the amount of $9,978.75.
Okay, thank you, Chief. You've heard his report and recommendations. Are there questions, comments? Well, you can leave things the way they are where we have no backup, or you can choose option one, two, or three.
I'd make a motion for option one.
I'd second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Dossinger, hang on. Are there any comments or questions, as long as he's up here for the chief? Okay, thank you.
I guess I can comment a little bit on how our Rough Rider Day's weekend went for the police department. Relatively fairly quiet Rough Rider days, I guess, as far as what we've been used in the last couple of weeks. We responded to about a little over 130 fireworks-related calls. Basically, our involvement for the weekend consisted of fireworks, alcohol violation, and fight calls. So, that was kind of consumed most of our time. We did have extra staff on both weekends.
Okay. Any comments or questions for the chief? All right, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we do have some timetable items. The first one is a public hearing, and we're going to have Community Development Director Kurtan introduce this item, and once he does that, then we'll open the public hearing.
Mr. President, commissioners, the first item is from Badlands Storage. It's a rezoning petition from Ag, the Community Commercial, for the property described as Lot 1, Block 1 of Badlands Storage subdivision. This item is a final plot that's later in the agenda, but the legal description would be as is, as with the direction that the final plot would be approved later on in the evening. The property is north of 29th Street and west of Highway 22. The planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval with one condition attached that the property would have to be annexed into the city limits. Mr. President?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kurtan. Mr. Colleen, is this ordinance 1556?
Yes, Mr. President, that's correct.
All right. So, right now, we'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone who wishes to comment on ordinance 1556 may do so. You just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anyone from the public wish to comment?
Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners. Steve Root with Advanced Engineering and working with the applicant to put together this zone map amendment here. I hear Mr. Kurtan, you said something about a condition of annexation? Okay. I was looking in the staff report and didn't see that, so I, that's fine. We're in agreement with that, and we have already paid the city, the cash in the park land also, so.
Okay.
Any questions on the application? I'd be glad to answer them.
All right. Any questions for the applicant, comments? Okay, thank you for being here. Is there anybody else that wishes to comment on this proposed ordinance? There's no one else from the public, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. Are there any comments or questions by city commissioners?
I'll move that we approve first reading of 1556.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. I think it's 5:05, so we have a second timetable item. This one is involving a special use permit, and Mr. Kurtan will introduce this item also.
Mr. President, commissioners, this is the second of three that we have tonight with respect to the convenience storage facility. They're doing a rezoning, final plating, and also a special use permit. This is a special use permit for the construction of the convenience storage facility located north of 29th Street and west of Highway 22. Staff and city and the planning commission recommend five conditions of approval that are attached with the adopting resolution. Mr. President?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. This is a resolution and not an ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. President. It's listed inaccurately on your agenda. This would be Resolution 39-2014.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Colleen. This is not a special, or, yeah, public hearing, so I'll just ask, are there any comments or questions by commissioners? If not, is there a motion regarding Resolution 39?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That takes care of the timetable, agenda items. We'll move down to item six, engineering, and Mr. Kubis is going to introduce some items there. We have some transportation agreements, so, Mr. Kubis.
Thank you, Mr. President, commissioners. We hope to have these transportation agreements ready tonight. They're not ready, but I'll give you an update where we're at. These are two firms we had hired with Civil Science and Westwood P.S. to perform some traffic engineering services for the city. These are related to a CIP project that we have on our list that's for intersection improvements. We're anticipating many of them to be signalized intersections. These are the first two design agreements we've had respectively with these firms, so we're working out some of those terms and conditions with each firm, and we hope to have them ready for your consideration at the next meeting.
Mr. President, which two projects are these specifically?
Well, when we issued the RFP, it was actually three projects. We combined the three projects and split them in half and essentially split the work in half. It was traffic counts at 18 different intersections in town. Each firm has traffic counts at nine intersections. And then we're anticipating up to five intersections that'll be completed, that'll be signalized. So, we're scoping the price per intersection for signal designs, and we've also asked these firms to do not a corridor study per se, but a corridor overview and to recommend some, I guess I would say, a low-cost fix for increasing capacity, maybe restriping some of our major corridors to have a continuous left turn lane. So, the projects, as we RFP'd them, were traffic counts, signal designs, and corridor capacity improvements.
Mr. Kubis, I know there are different kind of degrees of signalization we can do, but for the public's knowledge, what's kind of a general rule of thumb in terms of what it's going to cost us to put a signal set up at an intersection?
Well, we're anticipating right now $300,000 per intersection. Some of them might be slightly less, some of them might be more. A lot of it will depend on any geometric reconfiguration that we'd need to do at the intersection. Some of these that were, the intersections that we're counting, for example, on 21st Street where there's a frontage road on 21st Street West, that makes for a unique intersection because we have another intersection right to the north of there 15 feet. So, some of those will take a little more effort and a little more dollars to redo any geometry at those types of intersections.
Okay, thank you. But, give or take, $300,000 is a pretty good number to use.
That's what we're budgeting.
Any other comments or questions? You expect these will be on the next meeting agenda, no?
We do. We have a scope and fee proposal that I've been reviewing and giving some comments back to the two firms, and we hope to have those engineering agreements in place for your consideration at the meeting on the 21st.
Okay, thank you. Any other items you wish to report on?
Well, I can, if you don't mind jumping over. Ms. Marshak has two items, but I can sure jump to item D if that would be all right.
Oh, I can wait for that. I just, I thought if you had something else besides what was on the agenda, that...
Nothing for item 68, no.
All right. Well, then, we won't make Ms. Marshak wait any longer. We have, she has two agenda items. One's a construction easement and another regards a water transmission line, I think. So, we'll let her introduce those two items and we'll act on them, so. Go ahead, welcome.
Good evening, President Johnson and commissioners. The first item we have listed is for a temporary construction easement on 10th Avenue West project. This easement is on the south end of the project, and we weren't able to get it previously. The previous homeowners didn't want to enter into any agreements while they were trying to sell the home. They have since sold the home, and this agreement is with the current homeowner. It is for a five-foot easement that will help us blend the edges of the project in so that it will look aesthetically pleasing and help us work without hampering, there's a fence on the edge of the easement, so it will make it easier for them working in the right-of-way. The amount for that is $86.12, and we recommend approval.
Okay, you've heard the explanation and the recommendation. Are there any comments or questions?
I would make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll let you go to your second item.
The second item is for our east side 24-inch transmission line. This water line is in Broadway, and we would like to approve the contracts with Western Municipal Construction Wyoming. That project was bid on April 30th, and they were the low bidder in the amount of $5,996,373. We, as a staff, recommend approval of these contracts.
Okay, and how does that compare to what we're carrying on our cost sheet here?
We're carrying a cost of $6.7 million, so that's within line, within reason of the capital improvements budget.
Okay. Very good. Other comments or questions by commissioners?
Ms. Marshak, did we do, or did someone do some research? We know that this contractor has done a project of this magnitude before and all?
You know, I am not sure that we did anything like that.
Which engineering firm handled this project?
KLJ.
I think generally, when they recommend approval, they make a comment regarding the low contractor.
They do, and we received that recommendation letter from KLJ, so. But I don't know that city staff had background checked, so to speak, that construction company.
We did hold a pre-con with them on June 24th, and that went well. I can speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding the approval of this agreement?
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
And we have the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kubis, you have item D. This is some municipal code revisions to Chapter 38.
Mr. President, commissioners, in reviewing our stormwater ordinance, Section 3814, we had gathered a group of consultants, and after we had went through that section, this is actually Section 3820 of our code relating to stormwater charges. And what we had noted in here, as the Public Works Director Zerhoff's department has been trying to get our stormwater surcharges up to date, we noticed a couple of things in the code that we'd like to see changed. One was basically an exemption for mobile home parks on the surcharge. Right now, they're to be charged $1.25 per mobile home per month, and I think that's been kind of hard to track as mobile homes come in and leave the parks. We think we found a way to track that per mobile home charge, and it's by the amount of garbage receptacles that we'd have at a mobile home park. But we also recognized, in the group of consultants that we had gathered, recognized that mobile home parks do in fact have more runoff than a low-density residential, and this ordinance was treating them the same. So, what we'd like to do is to move mobile home parks and treat them the same as high-density residential, which gives them an eight cent per thousand square foot surcharge. In rough numbers, just to put that in perspective, for a 20-acre mobile home park, it'd be $68 a month. So, it's, I don't think, an overwhelming burden on mobile home park owners. The other change that we're requesting towards the end, there was another, I guess, an exemption, talked about credits that could be applied instead of paying your stormwater charge. To my knowledge, we've never had an application. We don't have a formal application to apply for a credit. There would be a lot of review time here that would take up a lot of city staff time if we had to review these applications for credit when it came to the stormwater surcharge. And again, our group of consultants chimed in here and said that, in fact, you know, we should never accept an application for a credit for a stormwater surcharge because these developments do have more runoff. And all that runoff, even if it's collected in a pond and discharged, while the rate of runoff is the same, we have more runoff that's entering into our city system. So, we'd like to eliminate the sections three and four that refer to credits and the application for credits as it applies to the stormwater surcharge. I guess city staff has reviewed this. We recommend approval of the change to this ordinance. Be happy to answer any questions.
Well, first, this isn't written in the form of an ordinance change, so I'm assuming this is a report and you're looking for feedback.
I think that's correct, Mr. President. We would need to bring it back as an ordinance to change code.
Okay, so, feel free to give Mr. Kubis your feedback.
The only other thing I noticed that you may want to look at is you've got the base rate at $1.25 per mobile home. That's not a change. And I understand you've come up with a method to count that, but why wouldn't we be charging that $1.25 per lot, per pad? So, when we, so when we get a mobile home court that's 50% full, you've still got runoff coming.
I couldn't answer that question. I guess, I think the intent of this was that there was a time when our mobile home parks were nearly empty and charging them the full rate when there was a fraction of the full potential income coming in. And there might be a case for more runoff when there's a mobile home on the lot versus a grassed surface.
Well, I guess you guys can talk about that.
Commissioner Jackson, too, and Craig, I believe they still had the monthly base charge, but it's a surcharge we're talking about.
Yeah, we didn't change with these proposed changes.
I understand, but I'm talking about the base charge.
The base charge could be changed to a per-lot basis, and we talked about that. I wasn't sure there was a way to track how many homes were actually out there, but we do charge them whenever they have an extra garbage receptacle, like I said. So, that would be the way that we could track the mobile homes that are there.
If you have a mobile home park and you're going to charge a base rate to it, you know the square footage in there, why not just have... the square footage in there, why not just have your rate be so many cents or tenths of a cent per square foot? And you'll know if they change the size of the park. But I mean, that could be your base rate, because it's going to, there's a certain amount of runoff that comes off whether there's units on it or not.
There is, and we can discuss this more, staff. I think charging them when there's a mobile home on the lot follows more in line with the way the rest of the charges apply. If there's a house on a residential lot, it gets charged. If it's vacant, it doesn't get a charge, so...
Oh, really?
Vacant property or undeveloped property is exempt for this ordinance. So I think maybe that follows more in line with a mobile home on the lot versus not on the lot.
Well, I think we'd want you to be consistent, so...
When it comes before you with the requested change in ordinance, we'll have discussed it a little bit more, and we'll give you our formal recommendation at that time.
And one thing I'd like to note, too, is on the commercial properties last year budget, we increased it 20 cents per thousand square feet, which is, we'll include that in the ordinance.
And our, you know, Mr. Zeroff, when you talk about a rate like that, is that listed on in ordinance or is that on our rate sheet? I forget what we call that right now.
It was approved at our fee schedule.
Fee schedule, that's...
And not in the ordinance.
So wouldn't these numbers be better off to be in the fee schedule, too, and just be referenced? You know, the fee schedule will be referenced in the ordinance?
Yes.
So you'll probably make that change, too? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Other feedback?
I guess just one thing, President Johnson, I wanted to add is I appreciate Engineer Kubis looking into this. Lottery surcharges haven't been increased or, I guess, added since 2009, and we've had a lot of development happen with that, and there's a lot of stormwater maintenance and issues that we're dealing with. So we're trying to get on top of this.
Mr. Kubis, any project updates?
I just wanted to give you two project updates. We do have a couple of street projects that have been under construction. They don't get a lot of attention because the streets were never built before, or we have a good detour going around some of them now. But we have 10th Avenue West on the very north end of town, from where 10th Avenue West ended before at 29th Street, is under construction, on schedule. I think we're looking to, you know, wrap that project up and have it open to traffic in, I would say, the next six weeks. So that project will now be a paved street up to what will be 40th Street. The other project, a street project that we have under construction is the Empire Road Willer Circle Project, Attorney Kohling referenced earlier. That project is underway, shut off the traffic right now, and the next time that the public will get to drive on it, Empire Road will be realigned and will come out onto Fairway Street. But again, that project is moving along. They're doing the utility work right now with the street project to follow later this Any other questions you might have on projects? I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Any comments or questions? I have one. I had the opportunity to spend a couple hours at the refinery last week, walk the site, and that seems to be going pretty well. I mean, they've had to deal with a lot of rain issues out there, but they did express a little bit of concern of that project that we have going on the west side of town, that we would have our pipe in the ground and completed on schedule. And I think they've commented to our city staff, and I don't know if they're working with Mr. Zeroff or Mr. Kubis, but any comments there?
Yeah, Mr. Zeroff's handling those projects. I'd let him address that.
I know they did attend our west lift station project and did have some concern. There are some issues with groundwater in some of those areas, but our, you know, our water reclamation facility, Influent Pump Station, the piping to west lift station and that is, in my opinion, ahead of the Highway 10 lift station. I was out there Thursday, and the Highway 10 lift station is well behind our west lift station and our other projects. I'm hoping that those, the pipe will get in the ground scheduled, and I think all the other lift stations are on schedule.
They did tell me that their lift station is, you know, behind schedule, but they also told me they expected to remedy that and get it back on schedule, so...
I think our Influent Pump Station and the Chris Water Reclamation Facility are close to, you know, operation.
Well, thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments about any of the projects? If not, we'll just move right into Public Works and let Mr. Zeroff introduce those items. The first one involves the landfill, and we'll let him start there.
Thank you, President Johnson and Commissioners. First, I have the consideration to approve the agreement with Wink Engineering to provide the final design, to design a install and design a scale, construct new facilities, improve the infrastructure at the landfill. As you recall, we looked at the, we did a feasibility study and looked at the option of going loose fill. That's the direction we're going, and so this would be the agreement with Wink to look at a double scale and the, some buildings and access points for the, or at the landfill. Enclosed, you have the agreement from Wink. Since the time of putting this together for commission, we've had a standard agreement that Mr. Kohling has reviewed, and so we'll have our standard engineering agreement for you to sign if approved this evening.
This, I remember reading the Wink report some time ago, and I think I remember in total, the recommendations they made to us totaled slightly over $6 million. So this was one of the items contained within that $6 million?
It was, President Johnson. And some of the things that were listed in the feasibility study, in fact, we've purchased through budget, some vehicles, a new dozer will be coming. We have a scraper that is already out there, and that $6 million also included purchase of adjacent property.
Right. So what is the current engineer's estimate of this project?
We've kind of been going back and forth. I think we're looking at a max of $2 million for everything at the landfill with the scale. It depends if we're going to do a leachate line to the new water reclamation facility and depending on the storage building, things like that. That's what we're looking at.
And Mr. Kessel, are we carrying this currently on our project list, or is this going to be an addition to it?
No, this is project number 28, and we're carrying $6.1 million. That includes the purchase of the land and...
Right, all the other, yes. I realize this is just one part of their total recommendations they made, so, okay. Any other comments or questions? So the motion here to consider then is either to approve this agreement or not approve it. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the Wink agreement.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So you have a KLJ change order?
Yes, KLJ change order number four for the Energy Drive. As the Commissioner remembers, we had some previous change orders. This is the last change order for the 2014 Energy Drive project. It's for the additional subcuts in a new base to stabilize the road before paving. We've reviewed it, and city staff recommends approval.
And Energy Drive is a project way on the east end of town, but...
Correct. That's, and it's finished, it's from, I guess, by Fisher Industries all the way to the landfill. It was a city-county project. City portion was from east Valard to north to the west, east bypass, excuse me. That was the city's portion of that project.
And did you say what the amount of this change order is?
I did not. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Zeroff? Would there be a motion regarding this change order request?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Mr. Zeroff, any project updates?
I did mention the water reclamation Influent Pump Station. I guess the, one of the things I wanted to bring up is the Public Works building is getting real close. We've done some training and startup on some of the equipment out there, putting together multiple punch lists for different areas. I'm hoping tomorrow we'll have the phone lines in for the fire suppression system and get a COO to at least start moving in some inventory. So tenetally, we're looking at hopefully moving in our offices at least possibly the 21st of July or the end of next week. Along with that, we have one of our street projects, the patching started today. This is for our Chip Hill project, so you'll see some additional patching on some of the streets, and so that project is underway. I guess if you have any more questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Zeroff. Does anyone have comments or questions for him? Okay. We'll move to community development. That's Tab 8. And Mr. Corton, you have a rezoning petition to introduce?
Mr. President, yes. I have a rezoning petition for the Public Safety Center. This is a rezone from Ag to Community Commercial for the new Public Safety Building located north of 21st Street via State Avenue. Size of the property is approximately nine acres. There has been no change from the first reading. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Corton. This is ordinance number 1555 at this time. We'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance. If you'd like to comment, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody wish to comment on 1555? There's no one from the public that wishes to comment. Any comments or questions by city commissioners?
I'll move the approved second reading of 1555.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have some final plats. First one involves Badland Storage, and Mr. Corton, we'll let you introduce that.
This is a final plat request for Badland Storage Subdivision located north of 29th Street West and to the west of Highway 22. The plat consists of 3.8 acres. Planted zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Corton. Mr. Kohling, I'm assuming it's Resolution Number 40?
Yes, that's correct, 40-2014.
40-2014. So any comments or questions by city commissioners?
I just have one question, Mr. Corton. With the prior discussion that we had about annexation, we're just annexing the 3.8 acres? Is that...
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's not happening right now? That'll happen at a later time?
Yes, I would presume that they're going to submit their application for annexation pretty quick. They would like to get construction started as quickly as possible. Now would be a requirement that they'll need to meet before we could provide urban services.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Not? Is there a motion regarding Resolution 40-2014?
I would make motion to approve. Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Second item here is the Karski subdivision.
This is the final plat for the Karski subdivision, generally located south of 35th Street southwest and west of the Pine Crest Commons PUD, located northwesterly of Exit 59 off the interstate. Planted commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Corton. This would be Resolution 4120-14. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, is there a motion regarding Resolution 41?
I'll move that we approve 41-2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Corton, anything else?
No other items tonight.
Thank you. Any comments, any issues by city commissioners? Not? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If you would, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public, so the chair to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the second. All in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion carries. We're adjourned.